We're at the June 9th. Resource Conservation District of Santa Cruz County Regular and Special Board Meeting. First item of business, Tangi is going to take roll call.
Kelly Bell?
Here.
Robert Kettley. Not here. I'm not expecting him to be here. Howard Levenberg?
Here.
Mike Manfree?
Here.
Jim McKenna?
Here.
John Ricker?
Here.
Great. Thank you. We have a quorum.
And very briefly, this is how we're going to conduct it. We have some opening comments by Lisa Laurie and Jim Robbins. Regarding the Forest Health Plan. They are a little more of a technical band and can explain the features, the rationale, what the intent is. At that time, the board will be allowed to ask them a few questions. Upon finishing that, we will open it up for the general public, according to the whole procedure, raising hands, et cetera, three minutes. All the housekeeping items we talked about earlier. I would like to thank you all for coming to the meeting. This is really valuable input for us. We take it very seriously. And we look forward to hearing some of your comments. And at this point, I'd like to have Lisa and Jim make their short presentations. Thank you.
Really quickly, we do have the public comment. Do we want to put just for those items that are not on the agenda, Jim? Or do we want to hold that for later? Sorry to interrupt.
Those items will wait until afterward. Yeah, I've already said that, yeah. Okay, so Lisa and Jim? You probably know how you want to divide up your presentation.
We do. So I'm going to unmute it there. Can everyone hear me okay? Yeah, all right. Bear with me as I'm working from a reduced capacity voice here. All right, let me get this PowerPoint lined up here. I'm going to share my screen with you. All right, there we go. So. All right, so can you all see my presentation slide?
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much to the board and members of the public who are here tonight. I'm Lisa Laurie. I'm the Executive Director here with the RCD of Santa Cruz County. And I have with me Jim Robbins from Almas Ecological. He's our lead technical consultant on this particular program. And so what Jim and I are going to do tonight is provide an overview presentation on the Santa Cruz County Forest Health and Wildfire Resilience Public Works Plan, which is our topic of our public hearing tonight and board discussion. So we're going to just click through some slides summarizing, kind of setting the context for this program. And then Jim is going to dive into really the details of the document. I'm sure that you all have had a chance to review that in advance. And as you can see, it's a, you know, there's, there's a lot of meat in there. So we want to take some time to talk through it. We'll be talking through the process and some of the projects that we're foreseeing implementing under this program. And then take some time to summarize some of the public comment that we've received to date. Before then transitioning over into next steps and opening it up for further comment. So, you know, what, what brings us all here today and what has us as an organization and a concerned community thinking about the health of our forests here in the Santa Cruz Mountains? Is that, as, as we're all very acutely aware, our Santa Cruz Mountains region are continually threatened by catastrophic wildfire, particularly in the wild and urban interface. And through a combination of climate change leading to drier fuel loads, century of policy of fire suppression leading to increased fuel loads and population expansion further into that wild and urban interface. We really see this heightened risk and an urgent need to be thinking about how we as a community and as individuals are managing our lands and forested areas to improve forest health and to reduce that risk of wildfire to our communities. And certainly this past year, the CZU Lightning Complex Fire really underscored the urgency of that need and, and the importance of this work across our community. And there are a number of different partner agencies, organizations, community groups who are really actively involved in addressing these issues at many different scales. And the RCD is one of those critical partners has had our Forest Health and Wildfire Resiliency Program for many years, through which we work to provide education and outreach and assistance to improve the health of our forests and reduce wildfire risk. A lot of the work that we're doing is through regional collaboration and planning. As I mentioned, education, outreach, as well as project development permitting and implementation. So a few examples of that work, just in setting some context for our own organization, is the countywide chipping program that we provide to assist landowners in creating defensible space around their homes. We've been working really closely with the Fire Safe Council of Santa Cruz County on community outreach and education on home hardening, creation of defensible space, assisting with the creation of fireways communities to mobilize neighbors, helping neighbors in these efforts. We provide forest management planning assistance and I'm really happy to have Matt Abernathy here on the Zoom meeting today. He's our Forest Health and Fire Resiliency Program Specialist and has a great background in forest management planning using the model of the Natural Resources Conservation Service. And through that work, we really, we try to identify what the stewardship goals are, what the needs of the landowners are and identify particular management practices or projects. And then ways that we can connect landowners with resources, either through our own organization or others, to assist with that implementation of that work. We also work across multiple landowners on projects at the landscape scale to assist with forest management and fire risk reduction. Projects like shaded fuel breaks and, and others with various partners. In addition to, you know, working on the, the identification of priority projects, we also help landowners through the process of designing and developing the project, understanding the permitting requirements of those projects, securing the necessary permits. And, and then overseeing implementation of the work and any additional monitoring that might be. And of course, really just want to emphasize that we do not do this alone and that everything we do is through partnership, whether it's with partnership with individual landowners, with homeowners associations, with neighborhoods, with different agencies and organizations. And I think what we can all really recognize is that the scale of the need in our community is huge. And no one organization can do it alone. And so we really try to emphasize and focus on ways that we can leverage the skills and the experience and the resources of ourselves and our various partners in order to meet our, our common goals. The work that the RCD is doing within this program is publicly funded through a number of grants, primarily through CAL FIRE, the Coastal Conservancy and Department of Conservation, Natural Resources Conservation Service and California Fire Safe Council, as well as others. So together with a number of different agencies and there's been a long recognition that there's a need to reduce the barriers to implementing forest health and fuels management work, particularly in the coastal zone, while at the same time protecting and enhancing coastal resources. And those barriers are everything from funding to support the work, labor and equipment, as well as overcoming barriers related to environmental compliance and permitting, understanding what those needs are and the different pathways to, to ensure compliance. And again, the CZU Fire, I think, really just laid bare the urgency of these needs and has really mobilized, you know, a heightened focus on, on how can we collectively increase the pace and scale of this work and be working at multiple levels to be reducing these barriers. And so when we think about solutions, there's, you know, there's a number of different levels at which we can be addressing these problems. And while efforts are underway to address these barriers at the state level, we at the RCD have been working with our partners up in San Mateo, as well as other local partners here to be looking at how can we develop a near-term solution to meet the immediate needs for compliance with the Coastal Act and local coastal programs to increase the, the efficiency of permitting and implementation of this critical work in the coastal zone. And the Public Works Plan is a, went through many different discussions that we've had with various partners that we've been able to identify as the, you know, the optimal near-term solution to develop that. And that's what we're going to be talking through tonight. So what, what is the Public Works Plan? The Public Works Plan, it's an alternative to local coastal programs. And it provides a programmatic approval for large or phased public works projects, such as any development proposed by a special district. So this particular mechanism within the Coastal Act was identified as, you know, a key tool that would be available to an RCD as a special district. And the, the, the benefit that it provides is an alternative to project by project review of public works that would otherwise require multiple coastal development permits for, for the different components. So rather than looking at individual project by project review and securing of coastal development permits, it provides a single document, a single framework for providing that coverage for multiple projects that meet the, the, the standards and the definitions within the Public Works Plan. So the idea is that through this, this tool, we would have a more efficient way of permitting those projects that require that permit, saving time and money with no fees and an expedited 30-day approval process. And something that's really important to note is that the Public Works Program is a voluntary mechanism. It's meant to be an additional option or an alternative to individual project coastal development permits or timber harvest plans in the cases where they would otherwise be required for projects. And as I, as I mentioned, the other benefit of this tool is that it's an immediate opportunity to enable the increased pace and scale of project implementation within the existing legal framework that we have. And from the RCD's standpoint, it, it has some parallels to an ongoing program that we have, our Partners in Restoration Permit Coordination Program, where we essentially hold streamlined permits and partners can, can opt to utilize them. It's not a requirement, but it's an additional resource should the RCD or a partner want to utilize it. And I'll talk about that program in a little bit more detail. I think it's also really important to emphasize what the Public Works Plan is not. It is not a new legal mandate or a new regulation. It does not affect existing exemptions. So if a project currently would not trigger a coastal development permit, then it is still exempt. It does not create an additional requirement where there currently is not one. And again, it's, it's something that applicants can, can choose. Or a landowner or a project proponent can continue to pursue existing pathways to project permitting and implementation, be that an exemption, a coastal development permit, including the project within a timber harvest plan. Those, those mechanisms are still in place. This will provide an additional option. The Public Works Plan is also not an exemption from the Coastal Act or the LCP. And so any sort of, you know, additional exemptions to those programs are outside of what the, the Public Works Plan can, can seek to achieve. So why the RCD? And, and, and you know, why, why are we going down this road and contemplating and taking on this program? First, we here at the RCD ourselves have experienced the barriers to permitting this type of work in the coastal zone for projects we are currently funded to implement this year. We can talk a little bit more later about those particular projects. But the advice that, that we've been provided is that they would require either a coastal development permit or a timber harvest plan to cover the, the project activities. And so both of those pathways being rather time-intensive, costly and really not a, a great fit for the types of, of work and the intent of the projects that, that we're advancing. And the RCD as a special district, we, because we are considered by the state as a public works entity, we, unlike other organizations like CAL FIRE or Fire Safe Councils, we legally have the designation to be able to apply for and, and maintain a public works plan. And so it's, it's simply a tool that is not currently available for other entities to, to, to hold. So in a way, we at the RCD, it's not an unusual position for us to be in where there's a, a, a large problem affecting the ability of our partners to get conservation and land management work on the ground. And we, because of our unique role as an RCD and as a public agency and a public works entity, are particularly well situated at the interface of the various agencies and organizations and, and landowners who have these common goals to, to implement work on the ground. And, and we're uniquely positioned to be able to advance the, the tools that are available to us to help in overcoming those barriers. And so really, this is an issue that's beyond our, our district. And it's one that many, as I mentioned, many different entities are, are working to resolve over the long term. But we're particularly well-suited to, to be able to move on the, the Public Works Plan as, as a, a, a near-term solution that's, that's available to us now. And this is an issue that are, and a need that our, our funders and our partner agencies and landowners have also identified. And really, we're in a position to leverage the, the decades of experience that we've had through permit coordination and streamlining through the PIR program, utilize that experience and bring it to bear on, and bringing this Public Works Plan to, to action. So just a little bit more context in terms of the work that we have done in the past, in terms of reducing permit barriers for conservation projects. We administer, we, we lead the Partners in Restoration Permit Coordination Program since 2005. And this essentially provides a one-stop shop for permitting of eligible conservation projects. We're able to bring together, under one umbrella, the permit compliance for, for seven different agencies and streamline that process for landowners to get work done quicker. In the time that we've been leading on this program since 2005, we and our partners have been able to implement over 116 projects, up to 18 projects in a single year. And the way that this program works and kind of a model that we are seeing as, as, as what we're kind of transitioning for this Public Works Plan is that the RCD by holding the, for the PIR, we, we, we hold the master permits. We can assist in, we can assist individual landowners or partner organizations who request our support, who are looking for a streamlined way of permitting their projects. We can support them in putting together the supporting documentation and the applications. And then, then we just provide additional support in the form of oversight to ensure compliance with the requirements of that program, while the partner or landowner is, is managing the implementation of that project. Also, under that program, the RCD can provide the soup-to-nuts support of really holding the, the whole project through from design, permitting and implementation. So it allows some flexibility and again, is really a, a tool and an option for both our RCD as well as our partners and individual landowners who are facing barriers to permitting conservation projects to utilize. In thinking about that particular program, we, we thought long and hard about ways that it might be able to be adapted to help address this need for the permitting of forest health and fuels management projects specifically. And within that program, there's very strict limits to the project size that were just too small for, for the scale of projects that, that are needed. And so making adjustments to the scale of projects under PIR would have opened the entire program to CEQA review. And so that was, that was not a desirable pathway. So a little bit of kind of walking through how we got to where we are now and the process that we've been through. Back in November of 2019, the RCDs of Santa Cruz and San Mateo County were working with partners within our districts to identify priority projects for proposals to the CAL FIRE Forest Health Grant Program. And a number of those programs that, that we identified across both counties were in the coastal zone. And so there was discussion amongst the project partners at the time of proposal writing of trying to understand from the standpoint of project scoping and budgeting and all of that, what are the, the permitting needs for these projects? And so we organized a field visit with various entities, including the Coastal Commission, CAL FIRE, State Parks, Peninsula Open Space Trust and a consulting forester to go out to those project sites and really look at them on the landscape and talk through what the permitting needs were and what the potential pathways were. And at that time, based on those discussions, the, 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 the need was, was clearly articulated to us, the need for permitting for these projects. And the potential pathways that were identified were either individual coastal development permits for each project or developing timber harvest plans that would cover the, the project activities. And so following that conversation, the, the, the direction that, that we were taking within our proposal was, was looking at timber harvest plans and, and developing those for the projects. Shortly thereafter, the Cal Board of Forestry certified the CAL Vegetation Treatment Program and the Associated Programmatic Environmental Impact Report, which created a new programmatic tool for CEQA compliance. And it really opened up an opportunity for looking at the, the standards and the requirements that were developed and approved by the Cal Board of Forestry around CEQA compliance for forest health and fuels management projects. And thinking about, is there a way that we could really leverage that great work that had happened? And, and use the existing standards and mitigation measures and requirements that projects would need to be compliant with for, for CEQA to simultaneously achieve compliance with the Coastal Act. And, and so through that, and, and again, I will say that, that those conversations about integration of CAL VTP and Coastal Act, again, are happening at very many levels and are happening at the state level and need to continue happening at the state level. But there was also this opportunity identified to be looking at that integration at a local level through the Public Works Plan. So from October of last year through April of this year, we convened an advisory group and again, this spanned Santa Cruz and San Mateo Counties. With, with the goal of this group being, thinking about how do we leverage the CAL VTP? And Jim's going to talk in more detail about, about that. And develop a programmatic companion to enable the streamlined compliance with the California Coastal Act. And, and the, the types of, of ideas that were thought through were put to paper through the development of what we're calling the Coastal Vegetation Standards. And we'll talk about those. And the various entities involved in those conversations. In addition to the RCDs, we had numerous staff from the Coastal Commission. We had staff representation from CAL FIRE, State Parks, the county planning departments from Santa Cruz and San Mateo Counties. And then we had technical advisors led by Jim Robbins with Almas Ecological, as well as a consulting forester and others. In addition to the, the focused advisory meetings, we did individual consultations with follow-up to dive into more details and to try and seek further input throughout the early development. I gave a presentation to, to the board back in March, which you'll remember, kind of summarizing the, the need and the progress to date. And then most recently, the, the outcome of those advisory committee groups was one, understanding the Public Works Plan as, as an opportunity. Two was the development of these coastal vegetation standards and kind of crosswalking the requirements of the CAL VTP to the, the, the requirements in the, in the LCP and the Coastal Act to ensure consistency. And then ultimately drafting of a Public Works Plan, which incorporated all that information and is what we publicly noticed and posted on April 28th. And is what we've all had a chance to review prior to today's meeting. To, to just give a little bit more information about the, the noticing process that we went through, we've got it kind of all spelled out here, posting it on the RCD's webpage. We did an electronic noticing to the RCD distribution list, which included local governments, special districts, agencies, concerned citizens, local contacts. We sent it out to our list of CZU Fire affected community members who we've been working with and providing technical assistance that, over 400 community members there. We directly emailed it to a number of different community groups, posted it on social media and worked with the county to also distribute it to, through their list of affected property owners who have been accessing the private and public options for, for cleanup post CZU Fire. We included a notice in the Santa Cruz Sentinel and, and also, you know, various distributions through our local elected officials. So I'm going to hand it over now to Jim Robbins, who's going to get into a bit more of the meat of the PWP and kind of talk us through what's, what's presented in the document and, and give, give some more, some more details into, into how this is envisioned for.
Thank you, Lisa. Could someone nod to make sure people can hear me? Okay, I see nodding. Wonderful. Well, thank you, everybody. So as Lisa said, So as Lisa said, I'm Jim Robbins, and I'm gonna just dive into some of the details. First slide you see really is just wants to give you sort of the visual um cartographic or geographic context. Um, you can obviously see Santa Cruz County, the um the data layer that you see in those colors is the Cal Fire Wildfire's fire severity hazard classes with uh as it gets more toward red and less yellow, it's more and more i- intense fire hazard. And you can see um about a fifty-two thousand acre um area in the north part of the county, north of the city of Santa Cruz that's in hash marks. That's what we're calling the uh P W P program area. And I want to be really clear um what the program area is. Um, one, it's the area where eligible projects and activities are product activities would be eligible to use the P W P. So a project happening in this area could use the P W P. Um, it does not mean that projects in this area must use the P W P. As Lisa has said numerous times, and I will reinforce, this is optional, it's voluntary, it's a tool at a landowner or land manager's disposal. Um, so if you if your project is exempt or you have a T H P or some other mechanism for coastal compliance, um, you're good to go. Um, it you'll notice it excludes the the city L C P areas. That's the city of Santa Cruz, uh Watsonville and some of the other smaller cities between to the south. And really, this has to do right now in sort of our first phase of this, rolling this out, had to do with sort of um level of risk, level of hazard from fire, and also sort of articulated need from landowners that have um worked with or spoken to the R C D through prioritization processes. So it doesn't mean the areas of the coastal zone to the south uh could not be included in a future phase, but uh they're not included in this phase. We really wanted to bite off this very meaty heavily mostly heavily forested um area, fifty-two thousand plus acres to the north. Um, and just just for for folks to 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 identify, the blue line that's sort of moving north to south is the line that is the coastal zone. You can see it, it's really large in the north part of the county, I think upwards of five or seven miles. I can't remember the exact distance, and then it gets very, very narrow from there out. It begins to flare up again near Watsonville. Okay, uh, next slide. And I think Lisa animated something, so you probably can push two slides, because I don't think I need the animation anymore. And I already described it, that's just a disclaimer at the bottom. Okay. So let's talk, Lisa talked um and mentioned the Cal V T P, the Vegetation Treatment Program and their the programmatic E I R. Um, and I guess I want to reinforce the fact that that's sort of, when we think about how we built this P W P, that's the foundation. Um, the Board of Forestry, Cal Fire, developed this incredibly intense document to cover a wide suite of forest health, fire reduction, fuel fuel load reduction projects statewide. Um, and really what we did was we through this process that Lisa articulated, these eight meetings, um, a number of us um worked collaboratively um to develop this thing we call the coastal vegetation vegetation treatment standards, the coastal V T S. It's a two and a half page document, it's exhibit B, I'm sorry, exhibit A of the P W P document that you all have, and those two documents basically in essence are the P W P. That's the technical basis of it. Um, and really, the 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 goal was, working with the Coastal Commission, was how can we use the existing P I R framework to get coastal compliance, coastal zone compliance? And that's what we came up with. So I'm gonna take a few minutes to just give some examples and go into a little bit of detail about both the P E I R or the programmatic E I R and this thing we call the the V T S. So Lisa, next slide, please. So Cal V T P um E I R, there's a couple of interesting terms that we'll use. There's one called S P Rs, which is Standard Project Requirements, and P S A, which is um oh my gosh, am I gonna forget the word? A project specific analysis. Sorry, so many acronyms. Um, and I'm gonna just talk a little bit about those. So S P Rs um are very similar or are basically mitigation measures. Um, or or they're they're basically standard measures for all projects. They have the same legal weight as traditional mitigation measures, and they span all the usual sequel categories, you know, visual, cultural, biological, air quality, water quality, geology, et cetera. So really, what the programmatic E I R does is it bundles this menu of numerous measures that a project can select which ones are appropriate for their location, but it's a set of pre-analyzed predetermined um um measures which which are are part of all of our, would be part of many of our projects. Um, again, it functions as a as a menu, so it's not like every single product has to have every single S P R. You pretty much pick the ones that are appropriate to your to your location. Um, a a foundational element of any project tiering, and tiering basically means fitting under or being um being appended to um the the E I R is this thing called the project specific analysis called the P S A. And um like the Sequa Initial Study Checklist, the P S A is as a checklist, and it's a it's a set of 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 rules about what you need to do, that the the information you need to document to then submit a project as compliant with the programmatic E I R. And I think that's really important. We're gonna talk a little bit more about how the coastal zone and these S P Rs and P S As all fit together. So again, sorry for all the acronyms, it's an acronym soup. Next, please, Lisa. So this, these actually are things that come directly from the programmatic E I R, the Cal V T P. Uh, the top one, which is a screenshot of box number eight. And basically, it's a specific set of checkboxes uh in the beginning of the checklist. And one of those is coastal act compliance. So if you're going to submit a project to be compliant and approved under the Cal V T P E I R, and it's in the coastal zone, you need to check a box that says it's not in the coastal zone. Well, then you're not in the coastal zone. And if you are in the coastal zone, you need to determine whether your project um needs a coastal development permit um or if basically it does not require it. So there's this very specific component in the very onset of any project analysis for inclusion in the V T P that says, do you need a coastal development permit? There's also two, so that's in the the P S A. There's also these S P Rs, there's two, there's one A D nine and one Bio eight. Both would specifically speak to the Coastal Act and the requirement of getting some kind of coastal, either coastal exemption or coastal development permit if you're in the coastal zone. And I only bring these up because I just wanna, as Lisa kind of stated the problem, this is a, this has been a problem or not a problem, but it's a it's an issue identified statewide that projects happening in the coastal zone may very well require a coastal development permit. And this is very deeply embedded in the Cal V T P, and that was again our starting point. Lisa, next, please. So let me sort of move a little bit and talk about the uh coastal vegetation vegetation treatment standards. In fact, one of the the big goals that we had as a group, which was uh again, the two county planning offices, the R C Ds, um, the Coastal Commission, we had Cal Fire staff um that were advising and were engaged in those meetings. We also had some folks from San Luis Obispo County who were wrestling with some of the same uh questions. I think Dan Turner might be on this call, he was involved in that, who are also wrestling with a lot of this, um, the same questions about how to get coastal zone compliance. Our goal was to come up with a set of standards that did two things. Really, they were more or less consistent with um the Cal V T P. And they were a couple, so they added some very specific guidance related to what's um related to the coastal zone. Um, so and and I guess the third goal was, they were supposed to be short. We, early on, I think I asked the question of, how long do we need this thing to be? Because I think we were all terrified of a of a fifty-page document of of the vegetation treatment centers. And we ended up with about a two and a half page document, some of which is a preamble, so it's about a page and a half of requirements. And those requirements span um a a number of different, um, a number of different actions which we can talk about. Um, the other thing we wanted to do um is just to make sure we were being very responsive and consistent um with the local L C Ps. So we needed to ensure consistency. And I think to me, when I look at the coastal uh vegetation treatment standards, what what jumps out to me is that the the programmatic E I R is really good at asking questions of um, you know, who, what, when, and how. And really, what the vegetation treatment centers do is they look at the why. Um, they really ask a project applicant, a product designer, to explain the lens of which they're making decisions and their thought process, particularly from an ecological lens. So it's not, at the end of the day, and actually, we've begun to test, we've tested this out in San Mateo with our first P S A that's moving forward, and I think what ended up being it's about a two and a half page project summary of which we covered all this stuff. So again, it's supposed to be consolidated, and it's not supposed to be some enormously burdensome thing. It's supposed to be pretty straightforward. And what it, the goal is, it allows the Coastal Commission to review the P S A, which you have to do anyways for compliance with the Cal V T P, um, the E I R. And it allows the Coastal Commission then to look at that and say, boom, give it a check, we're okay. Um, the other thing that sort of just jumps out is the um Cal V T P P I R doesn't talk a lot about coastal access. It's a statewide document that wasn't real focus. And obviously, for the Coastal Commission and the Coastal Act and our L C Ps, public access is important. So we have a little bit of language about um coastal access on there and trying to ensure coastal access during projects. Next, Lisa. This is just an example of, I think, what I what I think kind of exemplifies the 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 why and a little bit of a how. This is one of the categories in the V T S, and it's the vegetation removal hierarchy. Really, what this is, is we agreed to think through how we want to remove vegetation. So it's not just we're gonna go in there and take everything out, it's how do we have a hierarchy? And so we want to thin um and remove dead, dying and diseased things first. That should be the first things we take out. Um, we want to remove invasive stuff. So if you've got, you know, lots of broom, or we've got eucalyptus or any acacia, whatever it is, lots of invasives, so let's go for the invasives. And the next is, you know, if we're gonna remove native species, which we're gonna have to in many cases, um, let's try to avoid endangered, threatened, rare, otherwise valuable. And again, the end goal here is really about helping designers, uh foresters um to design and implement a project where the result is limited impacts to to native resources. Um, and really, especially in the forest health projects, um, really have an end result, a target of a species composition, which is a mix of age classes, heights, densities, um, and and mimics the natural environment. And so that's sort of the uh how the the um, the the coastal V T S, as we call it, is sort of constructed. Next, Lisa. Uh, one other point I just want to make, as we sort of have that pyramid, so we had the P E I R, we have the V T S. The other really important aspect is the P W P, the Public Works Program Plan, sorry, is is really um about being responsive to the local coastal program. So um it's designed to be completely consistent and a one stop shop. So if you go through the the P W P, you don't need to go to the county and get an L C P. It's in lieu of that. Um, and we worked pretty hard, um, very hard with uh staff at the county planning department to make sure that the Santa Cruz P W P was designed in a way that applicants wouldn't have to go back to the county and ask for a whole bunch of other permits. So um a lot of the other county requirements, biotic reports, cultural resource protection orders are all baked in. So if you do all that stuff, you identify it in your your P S A that you put together for the for the for the sequel compliance, it should it should all be in there. Um, the one thing just to say that that's not in there is if you're gonna work in a riparian area or a wetland, um, which we don't think is gonna happen often, um, if it becomes more often, we'll figure this out and come up with something programmatic. But that would require a riparian exception from the county, that would be the other permit you'd be required to get, the probably the only from the county. Um, the two other, Lisa, one last thing, just for a second, two other things just to jump out. Um, you'll notice in your copy of the P W P, a pen, uh exhibit B is, I'm sorry, exhibit C is the nineteen ninety-four general flip plan, a sensitive species list, which is an additional um requirement in Santa Cruz, again, to meet the county requirements. And the buffer zones for cultural resources, the E I R calls for a hundred feet. The um, the L C P calls for two hundred. So again, in order to be consistent with the L C P, those additions have been added to the P W P. Sorry, Lisa, you can please. So project types, um, I don't want to get too in-depth with this because it's a little bit confusing, but this is a simple graphic that is trying to show you that the Cal V T P really breaks the world up into three types of projects. Those are the three um things that are in, the three types of projects that are in italases. So that's fuel breaks, ecological restoration, and wildland urban interface projects. For the P W P, um Coastal Commission staff asked us to really break this up into two. They they really wanted the world broken up into forest health and fire prevention. With really forest health projects having much more of that demanding sort of ecological piece of them, with the fire prevention projects being a lot less ecological, much more very specific fuel reduction. But the overall goal, and this is why the sort of this this little bit of a Venn diagram, the overall goal is clear, the ecological restoration projects will have an ecological restoration lens. But fuel breaks, we can develop fuel breaks in many locations that are shaded fuel breaks that remove invasive species, that really help native species and help um native habitats flourish. We can do um, where we interface projects as well, that there's one thing about just removing um to to create defensible fires at fire space, but there's also the opportunity to again, remove invasive species and replant with more fire tolerant, potentially smaller native species. So, you know, overall, those are the 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 P W P project types are the same as the P E I R, slightly different names. Uh, and again, the goal is, where possible, really bring an ecological lens where there's not just removal, but thoughtful removal that leads to uplift of the ecological communities. Next, Lisa. Um, also a parallel, the Cal uh the V T P uh P E I R and the P W P, there's these very particular um activities. You guys can all read this, and my voice, like Lisa's, is now going. So I don't know, Lisa or I, which one of us will be completely unable to speak by the end of this. Um, but so it's 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 a list of things from prescribed burning to manual treatment to herbivory and then limited herbicide applications, and those are all approved under the P W P. Uh, and let me, so potential potential project types, this is just an example. Um, the photo on the left shows sort of a dense understory and a tangle of stuff, of tangle of trees. And on the right, you see an area where the understory has been cleaned out a little bit. Trees have a, some of the, some of the uh intermediate trees have been removed. There's a lot more room for the existing trees to kind of fill space and grow less competition for nutrients. And really, this is sort of about the sort of mimicking natural processes of of low uh low severity burning, um, historic herbivory, et cetera. And that's sort of this this disturbance regime that we're trying to get back to versus catastrophic wildfire. Um, here's another example, sort of a fuel load reduction project where you've got a before and after. Again, you're taking out a lot of the smaller stuff, taking out um what looks like eucalyptus from seeing all that shredded bark. Um, and really cleaning it up, reducing the understory and some of the ladder fuels, and really allowing some of the native trees le- leaving them to remain and to really get bigger, healthier, sequester carbon and be less of a catastrophic fire danger. Um, and let me just, this is the last bit of what I will do before I hand it back to Lisa as far as um sort of contextualizing it. Right now, we have two projects specifically that are teed up and hopefully going to be implemented in two thousand and twenty-one in the coastal zone. Um, one is Last Chance Fuel Load Reduction Project, and the other is Skylark Girl Scout Camp. Um, Coastal Commission and county staff have advised us that both of these projects would require coastal development permits if not for the P W P. So again, if the P W P gets approved, these projects will be noticed under that in the late summer or early fall, and it would really allow them to to move fast. Again, Lisa noted, from a efficiency perspective, we've got no fee, which is a a pretty big deal since we know that, you know, C D Ps are an expensive process, it's expensive for the county to do the reviews. Um, there's also just a thirty-day uh noticing and turnaround for approval, which is really a significant um opportunity to expedite if these projects, if a project is consistent with the P W P, it can roll through this uh pretty effectively. Next, Lisa. Oh, I'm done. Um, that was my last slide. Back to you, Lisa. Thank you, everybody.
Great, thanks, Jim. Um, so speaking then in a little more detail about the R C D's role related to the P W P. Um, so so part of our role is coordinating with partners and stakeholders on project identification and prioritization. A lot of this work is happening through the various fire safe councils, the Santa Cruz Mountain Stewardship Network, um, Cal Fire and their project identification. So really, um, reaching out and trying to get a handle on those priority projects and where there's a need and a good fit um for for helping to to implement work through the P W P. Um, the idea is to initiate early discussions with Coastal Commission staff. This is a practice that that we utilize in every project that we do of really outreach to resource agencies at early stages to have shared understanding of project goals and design and to identify any potential red flags early on. Um, then to, for some projects, the R C D can manage the development permitting and implementation of the projects. And then similar to the different scenarios that I described with the partners and restoration per coordination program, we also imagine scenarios where where partners or individual landowners who might be seeking um streamlined permitting support um could approach the R C D through the P W P, find that support um for projects that they themselves are implementing. In which case, we, the R C D, would help oversee the development of the supporting documentation that's needed to um that's needed to, to demonstrate that the project fits within the P W P and then providing some oversight to ensure that the project is implemented in compliance with the conditions of the P W P. As Jim mentioned briefly, once we have an approved P W P, as projects are identified and selected to move through and be permitted through the P W P, we need to file and post a notice of impending development for each project, together with that supporting documentation. And that goes to the Coastal Commission for review and a hearing where a determination is made if that project is in fact consistent with the P W P. And like Jim described, the, a, a real streamline of that process is that at that point, the commission is just looking at what are the standards of the P W P itself, not looking back to the L C P. Because there's already an understanding and a buy-in that the P W P is consistent with those requirements. The R C D will also take on the role of submitting Cal V T P monitoring reports, which have to be put together as part of the Cal V T P anyway. And, and we can submit those to the Coastal Commission using the same, same monitoring report. So there's some efficiency there. I want to really emphasize that there is not an enforcement role for the R C D. That is not part of our, our agency mandate or, or role. And so any enforcement still lies with the Coastal Commission that is not transferred to the R C D. And this program really is a pilot. And so the intention is that we're going to learn lessons as we go through this about, you know, what are the efficiencies? Where are there inefficiencies that could be further improved? How much time and money is it, is it costing us to go down this pathway relative to the other pathways? And I think we're going to learn a lot. And as we go through with each project that goes through this process, I think we'll see increased efficiencies each time. So the idea is that after five years, and I mean, I imagine we'll be having more kind of ongoing reflection, but at the five year mark and then at the 10 year mark, we'll do a programmatic review looking at what's been accomplished and what sort of adaptation might be needed. So I want to move now to the, the comments that we've received so far. And, and then talk about next steps to then move into our, our comment period here tonight. So we had a six week noticing of the draft P W P. We provide opportunity for written comment through midnight last night. We received 12 written comments. All of those have been provided to the board and are now posted on the P W P website. Just to kind of summarize the, the, the different types of comments that we've received. We received some letters of support for the P W P from state parks, the County of Santa Cruz, Girl Scouts of, says North America, but that's Northern California. Some letters of support related to R C D capacity and experience, working with the R C D on project permitting. We received letters of concern that the P W P could hinder organizations' ability to maintain autonomy and control over their own project implementation. A number of those comments we heard from members of the Bonny Dune Community and Fire Safe Council. We received some letters about concern about R C D lack of capacity. And a letter from, from Cal Fire that while acknowledging the importance of the P W P for these projects in the short term, was opposed to the draft P W P as it does not provide a long-term solution. And I think that comment really underscores some of the context that we tried to, to present tonight that recognizing that the, the scale of the, of the need, the scale of the work, while we're trying to address it at this local level and find ways to make it work within existing frameworks, that there really is this ongoing need for longer-term solutions and longer-term negotiations at the state level that really moves beyond the, the, the scale and scope of, of our own R C D, but really wanting to acknowledge that. There was some confusion over who would implement projects under the P W P and concern that the P W P could impede existing project implementation pathways and exemptions. I hope that through our presentation tonight, we've been able to clarify some of those concerns. We will also be making some, some clarifying edits to the P W P document just to underscore the, in response to these comments, that, the points that we've been making about the, the P W P not nullifying or preventing any existing project implementation and permit pathway that partners and landowners are able to utilize at this time, but really providing this additional tool where it's needed. And we also received two comments from community members who are interested in having their specific community projects included under the P W P. One of those lies outside of the coastal zone. So the actual, you know, the permit, the, the potential permit requirement doesn't apply in that case. The other was from a community that is in the coastal zone, but outside of the program area as it's currently defined. And so something that we're listening for and that over time could adapt the program to is if there is a need and an interest in having this tool available to coastal zone, coastal areas outside of that, you know, particular area, area that we've defined so far, we will have the opportunity to modify the, the program at a later iteration if there is that need. So we're, we're really trying to be hearing where, where that need is and, and adjusting as needed. There were a few just administrative edits in, in the document that we posted up just a couple of days ago. So you'll see these here. This one was related to a consistency with the L C P. In further review, we saw the need to further clarify that, the enforcement role or the, the, the lack of enforcement role for the R C D. So there were some administrative edits in response to that. Here. And then there, then there's one other just administrative effort, edit of an omission of the number of days of noticing taken from the Cal V T P, which is edited there. So our next steps in this process tonight, we want to, we have an opportunity for receiving oral comment from the public. Time for the board to discuss the, the, the P W P, discuss the comment that you hear and then consider a resolution to submit the P W P to the Coastal Commission. That would then happen by June 20th in order to be included in the July Coastal Commission hearing where, where the Coastal Commission would consider certifying the, the P W P, at which time we could move forward with, with project work under it. So just in, in wrapping up and summarizing the, the, the need for this coming from looking for more efficient permit pathways for some of these projects in the coastal zone that otherwise would require coastal development permits, utilizing an immediate opportunity within the existing legal framework, while longer-term solutions are under development. And using our unique role as a special district and our unique capacity to lead on a P W P to, you know, really take on this responsibility and leveraging our, our experience in permit coordination to do that. Not looking to create new legal mandates or regulations, not affecting existing exemptions or creating new exemptions. And, you know, really looking to create a voluntary option that will lead to streamlined processes, saving time and money. And ultimately with the goal of having an immediate solution to really supporting the increased pace and scale of implementation of this critical work in the coastal zone that we and our partners are engaged in. This is the link again to the, the program website where you can find all the information we've talked about. And with that, I appreciate your patience and want to turn it back over to you, Jim McKenna, and see if there are any questions from the board that we might want to. And you're muted.
Jim, you're still muted.
Okay, thank you, John. Prior to opening up to the, you know, the members of the public, I just wonder if there's an opportunity for the board members, if they had any quick comments to the presenters. There will be plenty of time for discussion after the opening up to the public. But if there's anything pressing, we could attend to that right now. Okay, seeing none, I would like to open this up to members of the public. And if you recall, your, your basic, you know, ground rules, three minutes, raise your hand virtually and we'll call on you. There'll be like a, a 10 second warning prior to moving on to the next community member. Okay.
So I just want to, I just want to point out just so people know that there will be a timer provided so that you'll know when your time is up and you will be muted after three minutes. So please keep an eye on the timer so that you know when to wrap up your presentation to the board. And for those calling on the phone who cannot see the, the timer, we will give you a warning. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Tedji. Well, what I'll do right now, let's go directly to Zeke Bean. And please, you know, state your name and we need an address or anything, or we have that on file.
Just a city and a town is helpful.
Okay, great. Okay. Yeah, hi.
Thank you. Good evening, Director McKenna and other members of the board. I'm Zeke Bean, the Water Resources Supervisor for the City of Santa Cruz Water Department. So thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. And we appreciate your efforts, that we are in support of as well, and your efforts to supplement the Cal V T P in order to protect our coastal resources. I've submitted these comments in writing this evening. So I'm reading them from a sheet to get them on the public record and you will have a copy of them. So to follow up on our ongoing discussions that we've had with Jim Robbins, the City of Santa Cruz Water Department would like to, like the plan to include language and best management practices that are protective of karst resources within the plan area. And just a little background, the city depends on clean, safe karst-derived waters in our north coast watersheds in the coastal zone as a large part of our overall portfolio to, to serve approximately 100,000 customers. And karst terrain occurs throughout portions of the Cal V T P readable landscapes, mapped areas and other areas in the, in the coastal zone. And the protection of karst features is paramount to the overall protection of coastal resources and beneficial uses. So I don't have time to get into, too much into karst, but karst travels across watersheds in the north coast of Santa Cruz. And so protecting a watershed has impacts in other watersheds. So please consider adding language encouraging project proponents to implement the following best management practices. Again, we don't want it to be mandatory, but encouraging language for protection that occurs within karst protection zones. And we have maps of those areas and, and the county does as well, and we are happy to share them. The B M Ps are not intended to be comprehensive and other protective measures should be encouraged on a case-by-case basis. So I'll go through them real quick. I just have five bullet points. Projects should not result in the alteration of flow patterns into or away from karst features. Avoid falling trees or large material over karst features. Avoid driving vehicles or heavy equipment near karst features. A project should not result in the dumping of or inputting of debris into sinkholes and other karst features and minimize vegetation removal in the immediate proximity of, of sinkholes. And I'll just add that we're working with the county to implement karst protection into various sections of the county code. As those sections get updated, the various departments have been requested to update those codes to include protections for karst and karst features. And to, and, and I'll, I'll, I'll end with that. And I'm happy to provide more information by email or if anyone has any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Zeke. It's very helpful for us. Okay. Any other raised hands here? Kellex, hi.
Hello. Let me see if I can take my hand down. Oh, it goes down in time, right? Now I have to take it down. I lower it. Hi, good evening. I just wanted to thank Santa Cruz R C D for your leadership on this, specifically Lisa. And also thanks to your board for your careful consideration of this innovative tool. I think that this really reflects the unique role for which R C D's were created, which is to be nimble forms of local government responding to emergent issues that are priorities for our community. And, you know, there's in government, you're not always rewarded for innovating. And, but somebody's got to do it. Somebody's got to lean in and try to get things done. And I want to thank, you know, Jim Robbins, as well as Lisa, the staffs of both R C D's and the boards of both R C D's and our partners with Cal Fire, Coastal Commission, Environmental Groups, et cetera, Steve Otten, on really trying to thread the needle to address the concerns of partners who have really well-grounded and very diverse needs on this issue. And we've heard equally from partners who feel strongly that there shouldn't be a need for any coastal development permit. And from partners who feel like we should get a coastal development permit for each limb we remove practically. And so, you know, trying to meet the, all of those needs is really hard to do. And I think for this point in time, this particular approach is the right fit to be able to get the projects done that we need to get done, whether or not ultimately this is the long-term solution. So just wanted to express my gratitude to this board and your R C D for your leadership. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kellex. Appreciate that. Any other hands raised here? Any other hands? Okay. Okay, I don't see any others unless I'm looking at the wrong screens here. Does the board have any comments in general to each other or to the presenters this evening? I'd be, this is a good opportunity for that as well. Okay. Are we overlooking some thought or perspective that you believe we should have here that we don't? Okay, what a quiet group. Put them all to sleep.
John Ricker has his hand raised.
Excuse me?
John Ricker has his hand raised.
John, please proceed.
Yeah, I just wanted to say a few words. I thought, I read the document and, and the presentation tonight was very thorough. Almost put me to sleep, but it was, it was, you really, I think, hit, covered it well and addressed a number of the comments that have come in, a number of the concerns. It seems like this is another tool in the toolbox. It's not exclusive. It doesn't preclude other. It doesn't preclude other longer-term solutions or doesn't preclude other folks working their own way to address the issue. But it does provide a very useful tool for the RCDs of both counties to be able to move ahead and help out those partners who want the help and to do the projects. So, you know, I would support some kind of addressing of karst. I know we've tried to do that on some of the county issues, and maybe that comes through the the more specific PSAs, if I've got the acronyms right, but it would be good to, I mean, karst is a pretty critical resource in that area, so I would, I support the city in that one. And I also would hope that we, you know, continue to work closely with the various partners, including the Bonny Dune Fire Safe Council. They've done a lot of good work up there. And I think there's a lot of opportunities to work together on this and move things forward and also to let them, you know, help them do what they want to do up there. So anyway, I think it's another tool in the toolbox, and I think we definitely want to move it forward. And I thank you guys for all your work putting together a pretty comprehensive and somewhat complicated document.
Yeah, Jim McKenna here, Board President. John, in response to your wanting to include somehow the issues of karst, is that premature, or is that something, can be as an addenda, or as we finalize and address a particular project, we include that as a provision? You know, I don't want to do anything to slow down the momentum that the plan has, but I think, you know, things of that are of value. And did we have some phrase or comment that said that we would address, you know, items of that nature?
I might defer to Jim to see if he's got ideas on the best way that that would fit in. Again, I suggested it would be addressed more through the specific projects rather than holding up the process at this point.
Okay.
Jim Robbins, do you have anything, any suggestion?
Well, I have, I guess, so Zeke and I have spoken. I also agree that it's a very worthwhile discussion. I think there's, it strikes me that there's two options. One is the RCD and city work out an agreement of some sort, as you said, John, that as projects come in or are vetted, that we make sure that there's some structure to look at that map and make sure that if there's karst, we consult with the city. The other option, and I guess I would leave it to Lisa to kind of put the, give her thumbs up or thumbs down what she thinks is the best. There is already a special condition that does point to both the Santa Cruz County General Plan and the special species, special sensitive species. It's possible that very easily Lisa and I could add another sentence in there about karst and attach the city's letter and the map as additional exhibits in Exhibit C. So there'd be something that said, hey, if you're in this map, you got to think about, at least think about these things and have some explanation of how you're going to protect karst. I think either of those is fine. Clearly, the less formal, the city, the city and the RCD is probably a little easier for all of us, and it makes it less rigid and formalized, and it's probably got more flexibility and mobility. I'll pipe down there and see what Lisa has to say, but John, thanks for asking.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think those are two viable pathways. I think what we want to take into consideration is the extent of interests and requirements that we're trying to balance and maintain here. And, you know, in the spirit of not creating additional regulation, right? I think, I think Zeke's comments were very clear of looking at optional, you know, considerations and special considerations for karst protections. And so, I think we want to be really, you know, clear of that intention in whatever pathway we were to take in, including some additional considerations. I mean, I, in the spirit of the way that the RCD works, I would foresee having those conversations and consultation with the city when, you know, projects that there would be a potential influence for car systems came into play. So, I mean, I think having a more formalized step in our process to do that seems like a natural thing we would do anyway. So I guess I don't have a clear...
I can defer to that. That makes sense. Otherwise, you're going to start saying, well, I don't think we should take wood slash and push it into a pond. You know, where do you stop on being specific? But somehow, it should be written in there to recognize that there are certain ecological benefits to including all best management practices.
Well, I think the PWP does that, and it is not real specific on a lot of things. So I don't think we want to be unduly specific regarding karst. I guess it was more just acknowledging that and that it would be taken into account as we looked at specific projects, and I'm fine with that.
Okay. I know Steve Otten had his hand up here earlier. A real hand, not just a virtual plan. Go ahead, Steve. Are you muted here? You got unmute?
You know, I gotta, I have to unmute him, I'm sorry, and I can't see him because his, hold on. Get in there, get in there.
I think I'm good. Hi, everyone. Steve Otten. And just glad to be here tonight with the culmination of efforts on multiple fronts and recognizing the opportunity and the scale of what's in front of us and that there is a significant amount of development that, I think with our workforce and our capabilities and our permitting, that it has to happen. And we're just breaking into that and trying to do it in as a collaborative manner as possible. The, and which sort of leads me to a comment specifically about the karst under the project-specific analysis. Jim mentioned SPRs or Standard Project Requirements. And there's a very specific one under SPR 83 that requires consistency with local plans, policies, and ordinances. So anyone writing a PSA is still required to look into what those specific requirements might be for any of those local policies. And I know that Zeke mentioned that it was going to be put into plan, but there is an avenue already in the PSA to make sure that we're identifying key components and issues like that.
Hey, you did your homework. Good. Okay, any other comments from the public? If not, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing part. And anybody's welcome to stay on through the rest of the board meeting. Is there a motion to that effect?
I'll move and close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
I'm going to need to do a roll call vote on that.
Thank you, Tanji.
Of course. Kelly Bell?
Aye.
Robert Kettley is absent. Howard Liebenberg?
Aye.
Mike Manfree?
Yes.
Jim McKenna?
Aye.
John Ricker?
Aye.
All right, the motion passed unanimously.
Okay, great. You know, I do, as a final word to the public, I know you probably don't like to be called that, but we do encourage and really your participation, your insight, perspective, point of view. Remember, we're all in this together. It's a collaborative process. And I hope that you follow us along as we all move forward together. So thank you all for coming. We all got schooled a little bit. And many, many thanks for showing up tonight.